Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, August 3rd. This is a Moscow City Council regular meeting. And I will turn this over to Jim Boland.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim.
Welcome.
Nice job.
Next thing on the agenda is Farmer's Market Week Proclamation. Farmer's Market Week Proclamation. Whereas National Farmer's Market Week recognizes important contribution by farmers and farmer markets across the United States, and whereas farmers markets stimulate regional economies by directly supporting local growers who reinvest in their communities, and where agriculture is Idaho's leading national natural resource-based industry, contributing an estimated $9.76 billion annually to the state's economy, and whereas preserving our state farmland, including small farms, is critical to maintaining productivity, profitability, and food security, and whereas farmers markets in Idaho are growing in popularity with forty-five citizen markets now operating throughout the state, and whereas Moscow Farmer's Market has been a vibrant part of our community since 1977, and whereas Moscow's award-winning Shop the Market program enables use of electronic benefits transfer technology, or EBT, by supplemental nutritional assistance programs recipients to purchase wholesome fresh fruits, vegetables, meat, cheese, eggs, honey, seeds, and edible plant starts, and whereas fresh food choices and dietary awareness generally improve health outcomes and reduce the incidence of obesity, and whereas Moscow is increasingly recognized for its efforts independently and in coordination with others to promote healthy eating and active lifestyles, and was recently recognized by the White House for participation in the Let's Move Initiative, and whereas the Palouse Clearwater Food Coalition consists of area growers, sellers, entrepreneurs, policymakers, academic experts, and economic development interests who are working together to support and expand local food production, consumption, and safe, and sale, and whereas the USDA Secretary Thomas Vilsack observed that farmers markets play a key role in developing local and regional food systems, support family farms, revitalize local communities, provide important outlets for producers, and the opportunity for farmers and consumers to interact. Now therefore, I Bill Lambert, Mayor of the City of Moscow, do hereby proclaim August 2nd through the 8th to be 2015 Farmer's Market Week, and I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing and enjoying the many benefits of the Moscow's farmer's market and other markets in area. And with that, I have Erin Carroll here to accept this proclamation. A little bit later on in the program, why Erin's going to get a chance to speak in front of us. Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'd like to pull item H.
Okay. It would be known that Dan would like to remove item H from the agenda, which is...
Lease agreement.
Yes, lease agreement between the City of Moscow and Sherman Clyde. Okay.
And I'd make a motion to pass the rest of the consent agenda.
I second that.
Okay. We've got a motion by Dan and a second by Wayne to approve the consent agenda items A through G, H being pulled for further discussion. I will take the roll, starting with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, Dan, you have the floor with item H.
Well, I saw this on here, and Dwight, can you go ahead and tell us about it a little bit? It's the lease agreement between the city and Sherman Clyde for the farm in that acreage that the city bought from Sherman.
You bet. Up on the screen here, you can see, I mean, a picture tells a thousand words. This is the West Palouse River Drive property out where we had planned on the ball fields at one time. The area that we're talking about is the southern area, twenty-eight acres, and that's tilled land. The northern part, where you can see the cyclocross course, that's basically in hay right now. And so, over the years, when this thing first started, when the city first purchased this property, Mr. Clyde continued to farm it. That helped keep the weeds down, and basically, so it just wasn't wasted ground while the city got its ducks in order to develop whatever it was going to be. In our case, we had planned for this to be ball fields. Over the time, I mean, it just didn't happen. You're aware of all the issues that came up with that, but he continued to farm it. And so, but it's been at no expense to the city as far as paying him to do any of the weed control, but at the same time, he does harvest this and get a paycheck for his crops. And we just finally decided it was time for the city to recover some of the revenues off this property. And so, it's seventy dollars an acre, which ends up being about, what, nineteen sixty, I think, a year? Yes, one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars a year. And of course, we set in parameters there that either can terminate the contract, and but it's an ongoing, up to, I think, ten years contract, year to year, while we determine what the future of this property is.
Does this affect this year, or does it start...
It does. It's in effect this year. We had basically a verbal agreement to this, and then he left the area for the winter and most of the spring as well, and he doesn't have working business with them when he's out. Like, that doesn't work. So, but we'd already agreed on it, and so, it wasn't an issue when he got back.
What would weed control cost us on this? How much would it cost us to maintain that section of ground?
I have not done the figures on that. All I know is, I mean, that's forty-four acres, and we would have to control the weeds. It's just, I guess, just, I don't know the answer to that. But at the same time, with this, I mean, he is still controlling the weeds, to include the, over where the hay is and along the creek beds, and so, I mean, not only is it just weeds, but also, you know, he cuts that grass, and so, you kind of have a park area to walk in at least part of the year as well. This year's an exception, but years prior and the years after this.
Okay, well, you know, I honestly don't know that I could support charging Sherman to farm Izak's ground. You know, it's, you know, he kind of made a pretty good deal with the city, and I know, and he still does keep the, everything down there where the bicycle course is too now, and so, I would vote against this. I don't know if there's any motion to make if I do it. I mean, somebody'd have to move to pass it, I guess.
Well, I'd kind of like to argue the opposite point a little bit, in that it's a good, well-tilled, productive farmland, and farmers engage in lease arrangements of their lands to their neighbors or other people, or if you're an absentee landlord, you lease it back to the local guys. And part and parcel of any cultivated land, you also have the issue of weed control, soil care, and all the rest of the things that go along with it. So, the lease agreement amount actually takes into account the fact that the farmer reaps a certain amount from the crops he plants, deducts the input costs, the diesel, the seed, and all the rest of it, and then what's left over is profit. And so, rather than pay taxes on it and things like that, this is a way of recouping that back into the city coffers. And seventy dollars per acre is not egregious, from what I hear about what leased land goes for on the Palouse. So, allow me just to be the devil's advocate and talk the other direction.
That's fine.
Wayne?
Have to agree with Art a little bit, and of course, then disagree with Dan. Well, we did get a pretty good deal from Sherman when he sold the land to the city, and it was, the idea at the time, of course, was to develop it in a parkland, and that obviously hasn't happened, and if I was going to take a long-term look into the future, I would guess it's probably not going to happen. At the same time, with twenty-eight acres of city-owned property and letting it, being farmed it without any cost or any money back to the city, I think we need to look out for public land a little bit, and probably seventy dollars an acre is not unreasonable.
Do we have other agreements like this, where we have anybody farming any of the city ground? I mean, we own the Phillips Farm, but nothing really, there's no real active farming out there, is there?
We had an agreement on the Phillips Farm years ago. Kyle Hawley, I think, was involved in farming that. When we took it back and essentially leased it to the county for use as a county park, we did not charge. In fact, we participated somewhat in the maintenance. But we don't have any other leased premises, other than like the ITC, that have a specific use as an office building or something like that.
Right.
But we don't have any unimproved farmland that we lease out. This was a case of first impression, and when Mr. Clyde sold the property to the city, he approached the city. Randy Rice was our Parks and Rec Director at the time. It was, it was a good deal. I don't know what Sherman's idea was, whether he was trying to liquidate out of farming or what, but he did agree as part of that to continue to farm it in order to keep the weeds down. Since that time, though, it's become a long-term, we expected that that property would be developed within five years. Of course, now it's been probably twelve years, fourteen years, and twenty-eight acres, seventy dollars an acre, I lease farmland myself, seventy dollars an acre is not egregious at all. And Sherman's agreed to it, Dwight? Yes. So, anyway, that's the background on it.
Jim or John, you got any input you want to put in this?
Well, I would think that that's quite a reasonable amount. If he's farming, you know, roughly thirty acres there, and if he gets ninety bushels of weed at seven dollars a bushel, then he's making some money on that deal. So, it seems like, from the standpoint of the taxpayers of the City of Moscow, we have some sort of a duty to try and get some remuneration for that. So, I don't think it's a ridiculous price to ask. We're not trying to get him to give us all the profits and stick him with the weed control. So, it seems reasonable. If he's okay with it, then I guess I'd be okay with it.
John?
I have to agree. The closest thing I can come up with that is maybe a parallel to this, maybe not, but is the farmer's market. And we charge people that come into the farmer's market on a weekly basis, and they're on city property, and they use some of the city services, and this is also city property, and he is using it, and he's making some money off it. So, I think that, you know, fair is fair, whatever you want, however you want to put it, that, and there again, not knowing anything about the farming end of it, but I've had a number of people say that seventy dollars an acre is not too much, and I know Sherman, and believe me, if it was too much, boy, you'd still hear him hollering from Hawaii. So...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item H of the consent agenda, which is to approve the lease agreement with Sherman Clyde.
Hold a second. Okay, Wayne made a motion to approve this lease agreement with Sherman Clyde, and John second on it. We'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay. That's three, two, one, so we will move on. Four to one.
Thank you.
To the next item, which will be Staff Recognition Report. Gary, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing at this time, sir. We're gathering it up for the next meeting.
Okay, mayoral's appointments, and I've got one to bring in front of the council here, and it is Steve Simmons, Human Rights, to the Human Rights Commission term to go through the end of, well, twelve thirty-one of 2016.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve Steve's appointment.
Second.
Okay, Dan made the motion to approve Steve Simmons, Human Rights Commission with Wayne second. I will start the roll with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, and it passed by.
Steve, are you in the audience? Would you like to get up and speak? And I do not see him in here, so move on to the next...
If that's not Steve, and that's not Steve, then he's not in the audience.
Nope. There you have it. Okay, now it's time for item number four, Public Comment, Mayor's Response Period. We always allow at least fifteen minutes if folks want to talk about anything, that as long as it's not on tonight's agenda, or something that's in front of the Planning and Zoning or the Board of Adjustments, they may very well come in front of us and speak. Please announce your name and who you are. Come on up, sir, to the podium, and...
Oh, good evening. I have seen probably every face here in town.
You are, Sue. What's your name?
My name is Thorn Sully. I am Moscow's other publisher, and I want to talk a bit about immigration. I'm an immigrant. I envy all of you for having spent a good part of your life here. I immigrated from California about two years ago, and I have never felt more welcome in a place than I have here. I'm still amazed when I reach a crosswalk that cars actually stop. Anyway, I have some things to bring to this community, and I want to tell you in particular what I have planned and what I would love your endorsement for, for this coming November. As a publisher, I'm very, very lucky to meet people more talented than I am, and three of them are all players on the world stage, and because of my professional relationship with them and a longtime friendship, in November, for a period of a week, I am bringing to the Palouse Pulitzer Prize winner Jonathan Friedman, bestselling author and activist Victor Villasenor, and a man who recently was awarded the Isabel Allende Prize for Best Fiction about a Vietnam, with a Vietnam novel, Fred Rivera. And let me tell you just briefly about each of them and what you can expect when they get here. Jonathan won his Pulitzer Prize for a series of articles that he composed over a period of years on the plight of our neighbors to the South coming into our country to improve the quality of their lives. And as, in his citation, "As a result of what he had done, about two million people came out of the shadows. It changed legislation." His current project is to interview the kids who've been coming in from South America and have been detained in Texas, and what their stories are. And, by the way, it's not a pretty story. But Jonathan is going to be speaking here, made available to speak. My friend Victor Villasenor, who I've known thirty years, wrote about his family coming up from Mexico after the revolution and settling in Oceanside. Victor is a phenomenal speaker. He has, before the economy tanked, it would not be unusual for him to get ten grand for a single speaking engagement. He was dyslexic. He told me once, "It's a good thing that I got good at writing, because the only other thing I was good at was guns." And it changed his life, and he inspires huge populations. I saw him in June in California. What he's most interested in doing is talking to the Nesspurse and Tribe of the Coeur d'Alene, and also, he would like to be able to speak to high school students even more than those who are in the university, because he believes that they're more receptive to things that he would have to say. My friend Fred Rivera wrote a book, which I published, called Raw Man, and the title comes from the epiphany he had. Vietnam ruined him. He got out of Vietnam, a coke addict, alcoholic. He was blown off his track. Agent Orange ruined his physiology. Agent Orange destroys the cartilage in your joints. Eight surgeries, and a life of pain, and, oh, let's throw in PTSD. But he overcame all of that to write this book, and he gets the title from the epiphany he had. He was in the VA hospital visiting his own dad, who was a World War II vet. His dad is filling out the crossword puzzle, so Fred is sitting at the foot of the bed, and he sees this puzzle being filled in, and his dad's thinking, hmm, a three-letter word for armed conflict, and he starts filling it in. And then suddenly, the light went on, and Fred said, "Twenty-seven years after I got on the flight home, I saw that Nam War?" It's just raw man spelled backwards, and I'm pretty raw today. So, my point is that I'm bringing these people up here. I've been putting together a program to raise the money to do it. I've been very, very fortunate. The good folks who own the Meadow Winds Bed and Breakfast have agreed to put them up for the week that they're here. So, that's great. I mean, that's a couple of thousand bucks in the coffer. I started as a repository, I started a GoFundMe campaign, which I haven't really pursued just yet, and I'm pursuing private individuals. I've been in contact with our university and the ones on the other side of the divide about having...
There is no divide here. It's the Palouse.
And there are so many people who are so anxious to have them up, and my position is to try to coordinate the efforts to get the funds to do it. By the way, I'm getting them at a bargain. As I said, Victor has gotten as much as ten grand, and I'm getting the four of them up here for a week with multiple venues for that price. So, that's an arbitrary figure, but I feel if I offer them that amount of money, because of our relationship as friends, publishing, and drinking buddies, they'll be up here. And, my God, what a coup for Moscow to have people so influential on the world stage here. So, basically, I just wanted to introduce everybody to the idea that they're coming up, they'll be available to speak to different schools, which I'll be pursuing. If teachers have a desire to have these people speak in their classroom, I will work out a schedule for it. I would be delighted if this has an official endorsement of sorts from the city council. And when these guys, you know, show up here, they should be shaking hands with the city council, which is working for the, I know that Moscow is trying to rework the heart of the arts thing and how we identify ourselves as a city. By the way, it seems bizarre to me to say "we." I really have felt that you've all made me feel a part of the city. But how we define ourselves, we are people who can bring in world-class talent here, and any, anything that you folks can do to help, I would be so grateful, and I think the citizens of Moscow would too. Anyway, that's my spiel, and I have, I had no idea how many people were even on the city council, but I do have a synopsis of these people's stories, and I would like, if I may, I can, I can give them these...
Sure, either you can bring them over here to the, I don't care. If you want to give them to the desk over here, so that we can continue...
Sure. And then at some point, if somebody can show me the protocols, I would like, I'd like to hit you guys up for some money.
One thing that would help, usually we have a reporter here, and I don't know where she's at tonight. She's not here, but she's here...
Either one.
Yeah, we usually have some kind of a reporter, and it would have been nice, Mr. Sully, for one of them to be here, so they could have interviewed after this, or you could have discussed them, and they'd get in the newspaper, but that is one alternative I'd suggest for you to get in front of the Daily News.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And actually, as a publisher and editor, I got the publicity thing down. What I want, what I want, though, is how cool would it be if they come here and there's a proclamation that, you know, "We have got these people here this week," that we could publicize that a bit, too? The papers already, they already have an article come out on it. So, we're very, very fortunate. There's just not a downside to them coming, and we're going to stir up some stuff. What greater topic is there on people's mind than immigration these days? And there's no one more authoritative than these three people coming up to talk about it. So, that's my spiel, and...
Thank you very much. Just stay right over here and give it to Gary.
And thank you so much for, all of you, for making Moscow such a welcoming place to live.
You're very welcome. Okay. Other public comments? I do have, we do have another counselor in here. Jeff Schroeder from Mountain Home is a counselor, so Jeff, would you like to get up and not only address this council, and just kind of let everybody know what you're doing in Moscow, Idaho? And welcome.
Mayor and council. My name's Jeff Schroeder. I actually used to live here from 1986 until 1989. Went to school here at U of I, became a philosophy major thanks to Professor Frank Seaman, an amazing human being. Joined the National Guard here in 1986 to help pay for college, and went full-time, and then was reassigned to Boise, and I've been in Mountain Home for twenty-five years. Retired from the Guard after a little trip overseas. Been on the council. This will be my second term. I took two years off, finished my philosophy degree, and I decided it would be, I've worked in the political realm, public policy realm. I'm active with the state legislature, some of our legislators, and I do some consulting work for a law firm in Boise that represents about twenty cities throughout the state. Help write comp plans, rewrite ordinances, and that sort of thing, and watching the internal operations and how it all goes, I decided it'd be a great idea to go to law school. So, I'm temporarily a resident here for the next year, for my first year of law school, and we'll see what happens. But it's quite a city. I've loved living here when I was here before, and to echo what that gentleman said, very welcoming, as it always was before, but fun to watch, the same sort of things that we do on our council. We've got about a twenty, twenty-two million dollar budget, public, we have a farm that we lease, but it's our, it's our, it's our land application for our water, wastewater treatment plant. But that cost us several hundred thousand dollars in wells. We have to now drill for DEQ to make sure that the water quality's staying the same. So, we're just about done with our budget, and then I'll be either going back and forth. Our meetings are second and fourth Monday at 6:00 PM, so you'll all either phone in or go back and forth. But it's nice to just, thought I'd come see what was going on, see have an interesting zoning ordinance change coming up, so I thought I'd watch that.
Thank you, Jeff, and welcome. Okay. Other public comment? Then we will move on to item number five, and this is Citizens Commission Report, this is a Farmer's Mark, Commission Report by Erin Carroll. I told you she would be on the program, so welcome, Erin. How are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you. I feel like the farmer's market's getting some nice attention tonight.
Yep.
I don't know if I have control to put this on the screen, or if somebody else does. Is it this guy? All right, so, good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for giving me your time and attention. This is our annual Farmer's Market Commission Report. Obviously, I'm not Kathleen Burns. I'm standing in for her. She very strategically put this on an agenda when she was on vacation, I'm sure of it. So, you get to listen to me for a little while. Just an overview of our goings-ons and our activities there on the commission. I think many of you are very up to date. We're, I think, a rather vocal commission, so hopefully none of this will be too surprising. Before I dive into it, I just want to say thank you for the proclamation at the beginning of tonight's meeting. You know, we're obviously very invested as a commission in the farmer's market, and we get very involved in the details, and it's obvious that our community appreciates the market. The proclamation helps us see the bigger picture of how farmer's markets really serve not only our economic functions as a city, but as a state, and the social engagement there. So, I appreciate the proclamation earlier this evening. So, our commission. Quickly, it's just made up. We have community members, myself included. We have Gina Terusio from the Chamber of Commerce, and we have vendors on the market food, one from our food vendors, one from our produce, and one from our craft, Linda, Cindy, or Linda, Marcy, and Amanda, excuse me, and we have Cindy Williams, David Pierce, Joanne Mineta, and we currently have an open community member seat. So, call out to all people who are listening right now. If you feel passionate about it, too, we'd love to have that seat filled as soon as possible. And then recognition of our... And then recognition of our staff members as well, our council liaison, Wayne, Kathleen, Barry, who works incredibly hard to keep the market going every Saturday, and Amanda as well. I don't know how she gets up that early every Saturday, but that, she has an incredible amount of energy. The commission's makeup is really important, and I know it was intentional when it was built, but the best part about it is that we do have good representation. We have representation from the local businesses, we have representation from the vendors, community members, and even some on the ag extension side from University of Idaho. And that helps us filter comments, questions and concerns to understand all of the issues at hand and making it more of a balanced report and vote. We have vendors, we ask them to talk to our vendor representatives, community members, we ask them to talk to the commission. And so we hope that that rounds out getting any of the information that we need. Please feel free to interrupt me with any questions that you have tonight. Just a quick rundown of our meetings as well. As you can see, we really like each other and we meet fairly regularly. Sometimes we like each other so much, we meet multiple times a month. And outside of that, we also have subcommittees. We broke into a marketing and promotion subcommittee, agricultural, recruitment and retention, a craft and music jury, and a policy subcommittee to try and divide the work a little bit and help people research outside of the meeting time. And as you can see, the volunteer hours show it. We have 234 over the year, and that's not including the time that we ask our committee members or our commission members to come to the market and bother people with surveys or help setting up tables and things like that. So we have a very invested commission.
What were the hours you had listed there?
Over on the side?
2255 in 1992.
I have no idea. This is Kathleen built that.
Magic numbers.
Didn't tell me. Aren't they impressive though?
I'm sure they are.
Telling you, Kathleen's presentation, but I'm doing my best.
Is that how much Kathleen makes an hour?
Maybe that's just telling the city council how much we should get paid on the commission. I don't know. That's what I'll say for now. The national average of farmer's market commissions get paid. 2255 an hour.
That's why we love our commissions. We're all volunteers.
Good labor, it's a good deal. Part of our commission, a few of our members and Kathleen and some of our city staff members do spend an incredible amount of time doing vendor site visits. So part of, part of becoming a vendor is having a site visit so we can go to the farms and locations and verify that that producer is producing what they're selling at the market, that they're doing it under good practices and good faith, and just see where it comes from. It's a good time for our commission and our staff members to talk to the farmer where they live and breathe and work so hard. And so you can see, it's actually two slides worth of all the farms that we visited this past season before this current market. And they're split up. Right now, we're also working to, to find out how to make this a site visit across all of our vendors. So not just farm visits, but to see where crafts are coming from and the products that they're churning out and what that looks like. And it just gets us more invested into the products that are coming into our market. We also get a lot of side comments, or not a lot, but a few side comments of, you know, do they really grow that? How do you get that to grow where that farmer says that they live? And so it's nice for us to go back and say, you know, we did go to that site and they do grow that. I promise you, all of those strawberries are real, they grow every single one of them. Or those beans, they did grow those. It's an incredible operation and it's really nice for our commission to be able to go back and, and say that we've been there and we've seen it and it's a great operation. Projects that we've been working on, so continually getting feedback from not only our vendors, but from our, our customers and our consumers of the market. We have quite, probably every meeting, we have somebody for public comment, either customer or vendor or local business. And that seems to be growing, which is nice. It shows that people are understanding what the farmer's market commission is for and it brings recognition to any issues that we can help bring clarity to or help change if needed. We work to reduce walk-on vendor fees, which you've seen in the policies. And I won't read all of these to you, but we've just tried to kind of tighten up the market has been an overall goal. We want to make the policies worth enforcing and the policies easy to enforce for our staff because they work very, very hard. And we try to enhance the customer experience. So that's why you see chefs in the market. And the Food Saver Grant, which brought all the great canning demonstrations and the free supplies for our customers. And the music, obviously, and recruiting good talent. And we have buskers elbowing each others for spaces because they enjoy our market so much and it's such a nice way for them to earn their Saturdays or spend their Saturdays. We've also worked on new graphics for market signs and making some of our policies more clear so you can see that it's a very busy city staff members and commission when we're able to meet. Some of the policy recommendations on here are not necessarily current, but things that we have worked on in the past. So making sure we clarify how universities and the college student groups fit into our market, making sure that children have access to the market. And that has actually grown and grown and grown so they can vend. And it's been a really fun addition to our market and to see children out there, you know, hawking their goods and building a nice business for themselves. We've been trying to make the policy manuals more clear and making sure that people understand what the site visits are for, that it's not meant to be an investigation, but just simply a visit to know what's going on and, and to meet our farmers. Trying to make the sale reporting, sales reporting more clear and easy for people to understand and making sure they understand that that, that information is important for the city to know because the city gives a lot to the market. We want to make sure that they're getting the numbers that they need to continue supporting it. As you know, we passed the resolution for non-smoking. I have not heard any complaints yet. Doesn't mean they don't exist, I just can go on record saying I haven't heard any yet. So we continually talk about the resale policy. Any of you who've been here for the last couple of years know that that's been a highly contested debate and it seems to come up every year. So we, we continue to revisit that, looking at other farmer's market policies and making sure that we're doing what's right for our farmer's market.
So what's special about blueberries and asparagus?
We don't have enough of them in our map to sustain the demand without allowing vendors to resale from producers outside of our zone.
And they're also perennial crops and so more difficult to get established. You can't just grow them as an annual.
Yeah. We've talked a lot about blueberries and asparagus. That's what everyone says. I can't get rid of asparagus. We'll come to the market and sell it then.
It's like buying zucchini. If you gotta buy zucchini, you don't have enough friends.
Yeah. Speaking of, if anyone needs one, I have a bunch on my counter right now. Blueberries and asparagus, honestly, it's just demand. We've talked about it a lot, but we have-
Significant demand for that.
Enough, yeah. And it, mostly because of the early season. Those are things that we have earlier in the market. Yeah.
Erin, I think it's important to note too, that when we, when we use the term resale, we're not allowing people to just go to the grocery store and buy them and then come into the market and resell them. These are being, they're being purchased from other farms, wholesale price, because those particular folks are not coming to the farmer's market. And so that's, that's the resale part, just so that we have the product that the people want at the market, right?
Yep. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, and we have to know what farmer they're getting them from and where they're located and information on, on those farmers as well. But right now, there were, there was a, a strong opinion to eliminate resale, to allow blueberries and asparagus to, to be established here. And we just didn't have enough support for it. But it's one of those things that comes back every year to discuss, so.
As soon as somebody's selling them, then that's where you're, makes your difference, I guess.
We have value-added policies. Just to clarify, value-added are kind of the prepared foods that come in. So just clarifying what they're bringing in and the ingredients that they're using and the products that they're bringing. So we're looking at those policies to make sure that it's clear. There's also some inconsistencies of, there's four types of vendors in our managed by market application, but only three in the policies. So a lot of this is just shoring up for consistency's sake. And then, as you all know, beer and wine sales at the market were approved for this year. So we're continually just checking to see how those are doing, to see if that's something we want to permanently keep in our market or request to permanently keep in our market.
How are they doing?
So far, so good. We haven't had a lot of vendors, so there was concern about having too many and we have a limit on it, but we haven't even hit that limit this year. But the few that have come have done very well. And, and the reasons that we're getting for vendors not coming is that they're doing too well and they don't have time to come to the market. So that's a good problem for our community to have. But we paired one of our wine vendors next to one of our cheese vendors and that seemed to work out really well for both of them. So strategic placement seems to, to help there too. And then upcoming, these are just some of the things that Kathleen included. So the consumer and vendor forums, just again, educating our community that the commission exists and trying to get us out there so people filter through us and we can be up to date on how, how the market's serving our community. Continually looking for ways to access a volunteer group just to get more feet on the ground on those market days to make setup and take-down that much more streamlined and help support our patrons using the market. Looking at our policies again, like I said, and finding common practice, practices and making sure that those are clear and consistent across all of our documents. Amping up our social media and just using that to promote vendors of the week, specials, any changes that might happen for the market. We need to clearly define vendor, which is something that's come up with, allowing employees to come or interns to come. Our current policies include sons, daughters and immediate family, but don't include things like partners or even spouses, I don't think. So we're trying to, to look at that definition, making sure it's serving our market well. Continually looking at the word local, even though that's a very hard target to hit. And looking at our market fees. We've, we've talked a lot with Gary about the fee structure and looking at the city budget reports and just trying to find a long-term fee solution for the market to, to figure out the best vendor fees, taking into account what the city provides for the market and how we can keep it sustaining as long as possible. Other topics that aren't on here that the commission is looking at, we've had a lot of discussion about the free speech zone. So we're looking at Friendship Square and if there's any modifications that we might consider there. Looking at an emergency response plan for things like extreme heat or smoke, as we can see in our air now. And we don't really have an emergency response plan that, what do we do if it's not a safe outdoor environment? How do we call the market? Is there at any point, would we cancel the market and how would we get that information out? So just making that strategic plan. Looking at the overall market map, we continue to grow. Typically, we don't hit max capacity until the peak of the season, which is about now. This year, we hit it like week two or three. It was a early warm spring, so we had more items early, but we also had more of all of our vendors. And so looking at, do we have enough room for all the people that want to be included? Is it necessary to expand or do we think about the market that we have and keep the space that we have allocated to us and just change who is in and that rotation? Other things that are very important to us right now is electrical usage. We currently don't have enough electrical supply to the market to, to accommodate all the vendors that would like to be there. When you account for cooking equipment, cooling equipment, cash registers, all of those things take electricity. And currently, we have to put people on rotation based on how much electricity they use. So we are actually having some issues with that and would like to see that resolved. And then overall, just looking at the customer experience, continually coming back to see how are people are using our market? Are they happy? What complaints do they have and is there anything the commission can do? So that's all the information I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Well, thank you very much, Erin, for that terrific report. Council, have any comments for Erin? Wayne?
Erin, how many years have you been on the farmer's market commission?
I will be ending my third year at the end of this year, so I'm in-
And out, out of those three years, you've been chair two years.
I have been chair since it started.
This is an example of why our farmer's market works so well. Erin does a tremendous job. The, all of the commissioners on the farmer's market, their heart is really in it. They really believe in the market and what they're doing. They understand that it is still something that is subsidized to an extent by the city and they continue to work towards that end and getting more and more self-sufficient. Moscow's farmer's market, as we know, is setting the standard within the state of Idaho for farmer's markets. And I think that's, that's really a marvelous thing for us. So Erin, thank you very much for your service and the rest of the commissioners.
You're welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Erin. You too. Okay, we will move on to item number six, which is a public hearing for proposed amendment at Title IV, Chapter 3, to allow ground floor residence uses in the central business district. Michael Ray, you have got the podium, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So before you tonight, we have a public hearing for a proposed amendment. And this is to insert residential uses as an allowed ground floor use within the central business zoning district. Just to give you a little bit of background on this proposal before you tonight. Staff was recently contacted by a building owner in the North Main Street corridor, kind of on the edge of the central business to motor business zoning district. It happened to be the owner of the CJ's Building on Main Street. He was interested in converting the entire building to a residential use, currently a club use on the ground floor, some type of ballroom event space on the second floor and then the basement. A portion of that is conducting a, a bar use down there as well. And so the issue you have in the central business zoning district is that residential uses are allowed, but they have to be above or behind commercial uses in a manner that don't interrupt the commercial frontage along the adjacent street and in this case, Main Street. And so we talked through that. Staff had an opportunity to take a look at other properties within the central business zoning district, identified that there are several ones that are currently being used as residential uses and ones that may have originally been designated or originally built as residential uses at the time of construction, still used that way today, and some that were never intended to be, kind of the, the retail commercial space that you had intended on Main Street and the central business district. They may just not work well as that retail commercial space on the ground floor. So taking a look at the central business zone, in the center of your screen here, it's in the purple, you have all the, the buildings that I've highlighted in red on the outskirts. These are all residential properties. I did highlight the CJ's Building on North Main Street, so you can see the proximity to the motor business zone there to the north.
Both are completely residential, residential only properties?
Correct. Except for the CJ's Building right now. So the rest of them, yeah, you have numerous ones here on the east side of Washington Street. You have some here, this is right across the street from City Hall on Second Street. Those buildings are currently used as residential and they were originally built as residential structures. You also have numerous ones along the Sixth Street corridor here, Almond Asbury area, which just happened to be in the central business zone. They're currently used as residential and constructed as such. Taking a look at the, the front of the facade of the CJ's Building, looking at the ground floor, it's really hard to identify what would be the ground floor in this building just because you have a daylighted basement. Really, this is the level of the, the transition from the, the ground floor to the first floor. Once you walk in the doors, you either go up or down, really not conducive to what we're striving for in the downtown central business district with, you know, the buildings that were originally constructed. Maybe they have floor-to-ceiling windows, which would be more conducive to, to ground floor retail, commercial space on those buildings. So it would be a challenge to convert this to strictly a commercial space at the very front of the building. Looking at the property across the street, this was originally developed, I believe, as the Hotel Del Norte, currently being used as residential use. And so you'd have a challenge here converting that to commercial space, mainly because of those two steps in the front. You'd have to do some type of ramp to get ADA access and it'd be hard, you know, looks similar to, to residential townhouses that you may see within other areas of the city or other cities. This is just a same shot of that intersection on First and Main. And then you have some properties, these are just on the outskirts. This is A and Jackson, looking southeast. A couple of these structures were recently torn down here, but this whole block is primarily residential and these were originally constructed as residential dwellings. And then this is on Seventh Street, right next to the, the Ocularium. This is Tim Gressback's Law Office. And this building's kind of gone back and forth between residential and commercial use, professional office type use. They ended up getting a variance a few years ago in order to allow ground floor residential to convert the entire building back to a residential use. And so it's kind of, during that time, it had gone residential. I believe it had gone back to a professional office and now it's Tim Gressback's Law Office and he's sunk a quite a bit of money into the property. Another view- Another view, this is, uh, Tim Gressback's on the right here and then there's the Ocularium on the left, another property that could transition back and forth between residential, uh, originally constructed as a dwelling, but has been used as the Palouse Ocularium for the, uh, for quite, uh, quite some time. And these are properties that are on, located on Sixth Street. You can see Washington Street off here in the distance. Uh, these were one time, uh, in an appraiser's office and have since kind of gone back and forth between professional office and residential use. You know, these properties are located at the periphery of the, the central business zoning district adjacent to, to residential zones and uses. And so, naturally you have the, the transition between one or the other. So, what staff's proposing tonight is to insert under conditional uses, so this would be reviewed as part of a, a conditional use permit through the Board of Adjustment. Insert language to allow residential uses located on the ground floor, which are not located behind commercial uses with specific consideration given to preservation of retail frontages and/or suitability of building for ground floor commercial use. And so, this would give the Board of Adjustment, uh, some direction as to what we're looking for here, uh, suitability of the building. If it's like the CJ's building, it's not originally intended. I think it was originally built as the Elks Lodge. And so, it really wasn't, you know, originally intended for that prime, uh, retail commercial frontage and it may present some challenges, uh, converting that. Give the Board of Adjustment a little bit of direction there as well as maybe we don't want, uh, strictly residential building right at the heart of downtown, uh, within, uh, Main Street and Second or Third Street. And so, uh, it'd be able to have the Board of Adjustment take a look at that and obviously take into consideration staff's recommendation there as well. So, with that, our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and after considering any testimony presented, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that'd be read by title and published by summary. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Dan?
So, Mike, going back to the, we had the, uh, homes on, uh, Jackson Street that some of them have been removed. I remember back, and the only reason I really remember is because I helped put the fire out, but that, that, uh, former house that they turned into three apartments on Washington. And then they wanted to build apartments back, but it was, you know, it didn't fit the zone. So, that use wasn't grandfathered and they had to apply for variance or condition use permit on the, in that case, correct? So, kind of going back to that, so these houses on Jackson, if they're removed, does that remove the residential use of that property? Is that now commercial property that they would have to come back and get a conditional use permit for?
Correct. Yeah, right now, as it currently exists within our code, if those were to burn down or be destroyed, uh, more than 60% of the replacement value at the time of destruction, those would require to be some type of commercial component, uh, at the front of the structure. And so, they wouldn't be able to be rebuilt as strictly residential, like a single family dwelling. This would allow, uh, the opportunity to go through the conditional use permit process and be able to achieve that.
Okay, now, if I can continue. So, somebody does, we, we do pass this ordinance and somebody does get a conditional use permit to build a residential structure there or whatever, but then that place burns down, does the theoretically conditional use permit burn down with it?
Conditional use permit runs with the land.
Okay.
So, they would have that...
So, they still build another house?
They would have that in perpetuity, as long as everything was consistent with what they had submitted for the application for the conditional use permit, then correct.
Okay, thank you.
Art?
As a follow-up to that, would a residence built, uh, under a CUP therefore still need to maintain the potential for commercial use on the ground floor, street facing?
Not if they got a conditional use permit for ground floor residential. As it exists right now, if they didn't get a conditional use permit or if this ordinance was not passed, uh, say a strictly residential building burnt down, uh, they'd be, the only way they'd be allowed to rebuild the residential component of that would be to insert some commercial adjacent to the, the street frontage.
So, the clause that says, um, residential uses located on the ground floor, which are not located behind commercial uses with specific consideration given to the preservation of retail frontage. So, that wouldn't apply if you built new with a CUP for residential use, you wouldn't have to maintain the potential for commercial frontage.
You would, you would, no. That, that's to give some direction about, uh, existing retail frontages in the area where that building's located at.
What this, what this ordinance does is for Board of Adjustment, it gives them a way of looking at it without being a black and white issue, so they can make the decision on a variance without going against what an ordinance would say. Am I correct on that, Mike? Uh, after being on the Board of Adjustments for four years and chaired it for a couple of years, that's, those are the problems that the Board of Adjustments run into. It's like, this is what it says, it's black and white and you can't do it. And that's why basically this ordinance is coming in front of us, so that they can look at that on a base, you know, per basis thing. It's not black and white, but they can look at each one of them individually and make a decision if it makes sense or not.
Correct.
So, that's basically what is, what we're talking about here.
Other comments from Mike, from the rest of council? Thank you, Mike. I will now open the public hearing. It is seven fifty-six and I will take testimony in favor. Seeing nobody rushed to the podium, I will take general comments or those opposed to this ordinance change. Seeing now, I will close the public hearing at seven fifty-six and one half. After the council...
I just gotta say, I, I like this one because it mitigates, uh, some of the non-conformities that exist, so the people's property use can be preserved and that having that CUP process involved really mitigates, uh, some issues that might be associated with people just plopping down a use regardless. So, I like the way this one is written.
Well, as I said earlier, one of the things for Board of Adjustment, they have to go by what ordinances say because they cannot change an ordinance because they don't have the power to do that. Only this council up here can do that. So, this gives them the avenue. It'll take something, if you look at something on Board of Adjustment, it completely makes sense, but if the ordinance doesn't spare that, it just doesn't happen. So, Dan?
I'd make a motion that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that'd be read by title and published by summary.
I'd second that. Okay, we've got a motion by Dan and a second by Art to approve, uh, the ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and that'd be read by title and published by summary. Everybody understand where we're at with this? John, I'll start with you.
Hi.
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 Okay, and that passes five-four, no abstentions and no against. And this is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash...
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Twelve. We were just looking on the website, it's twelve.
Twenty fifteen dash twelve?
Yes.
I had not wrote anything down yet. Thank God. Okay, this is ordinance twenty fifteen dash one-two. An ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title Four, Chapter Three, to allow ground floor residential uses within the central business zoning district, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval and publication according to law. And with that, I will move on to item number seven, which is the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Funding Transfer Resolution. Gary Rehner, sir, you have got the podium.
Thank you, and you're just witness why we'll never make an effective city clerk. What you have in your packets tonight is the last, we believe, of, uh, resolutions that we think are necessary in order to, uh, put into effect the council's participation in the funding of the, uh, realignment runway realignment project for the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport. In the packet, you'll see several different documents. Uh, you'll have a funding memo dated, uh, July seventh, two thousand and fourteen. This was the original memo that was brought before council and debated in front of the council, uh, on August fourth, I believe it was, two thousand and fourteen, prior to the passage of the two FY two thousand and fifteen. In that, uh, at that action, the council indicated that they would support, uh, the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Runway Realignment Project, uh, match piece, uh, to the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars over five years and an amount of five hundred thousand dollars per year. Uh, we will join with the city of Pullman, who is also committed to two point five million dollars as well. The way that funding is, is produced is that the council took forgone amount of tax, property taxes and there was an inter-fund investment, uh, proposal that was put before the council as well. So, essentially, uh, taxes were raised about, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year using forgone amount and, uh, two thou, or excuse me, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was, uh, taken from existing balances in, uh, surplus funds, surplus funds meaning funds that aren't being earmarked for projects, uh, in the near future. So, uh, and there will be a, um, amount of interest paid back to those funds, uh, while the funds are being used for the, um, airport realignment project. So, that was the first thing. Council budgeted, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for two thousand and fifteen and the budget that will go before the public, public hearing on August seventeenth this year. Another five hundred thousand dollars is being proposed, which will bring our total commitment thus far to one million dollars out of the two point five million dollar balance. Secondly, uh, the council authorized the mayor to sign, uh, the airport funding agreement, which is the, um, FAA grant agreement. This is for the first fourteen million dollar, or excuse me, fifteen million dollars of discretionary funding and one million dollars of entitlement funding. You recall that one million dollars of entitlement funding is granted to the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport because it has commercial air service. Uh, it is one of seven commercial airports recognized by the Idaho Aeronautics Board as being an Idaho commercial airport. The fourteen or fifteen million dollar balance is discretionary funding. Uh, the runway realignment project is the number one project in this FAA district in the West and there is an opportunity, um, as, uh, was in the, uh, resolution authorizing inter-fund investments, uh, there's also a possibility that there may be as much as fourteen million dollars additional that may be swept funding, that a decision will have to be made within about a week to ten days at the end of September, which happens to just coincide with our budget year. Uh, council also authorized, um, the, uh, city to, excuse me, the, uh, grant funding for that additional fourteen million dollars if sufficient match funding was identified. At this point, city of Pullman has indicated that they have placed sixty, six hundred thousand dollars at this point in a separate fund, uh, which is managed by the city of Pullman. City of Pullman is the treasurer for the airport, the business entity for the airport and they will put additional funds in that budget as well. For our part, the city of Moscow will, uh, send over five hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted in FY two thousand and fifteen, prior to the end of our budget year, September thirtieth, uh, two thousand and fifteen. And then, as a question came up at our, uh, Public Works Finance Committee, what happens in the future? Does, at the beginning of the budget year, does the city of Moscow merely transfer five hundred thousand dollars to the city of Pullman and they retain it and use it as necessary? And that is not what will happen. What will happen is after the initial five hundred thousand dollars, uh, which will be necessary for that first, uh, grant, uh, after that, after October first, when the city of Pullman requires additional match funds, they will make a call to Don Palmer and, uh, Don will receive copies of all the funding information, all the grant requests, reimbursement requests from the FAA. And then, that necessary funding in order to meet the obligation of the match will be transferred to the city of Pullman, restricted, restricted so that it can be used only for, uh, the airport runway realignment project. So, all that fund will not go over right away, it will be on demand. So, uh, we met last Wednesday as a finance, uh, group for the airport realignment project and all of the niceties were worked out, but that's the policy, uh, or the process that will be followed. What you have in front of you today is loosely called the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Funding Resolution. And this resolution is a almost mirror image of one that was passed by the city of Pullman about a week and a half ago. Uh, this funding resolution says where the money will go. It restricts the use of the funding, that it will be transferred to the city of Pullman for use only as match for the FAA grant for the one runway realignment project. Uh, that it can't be used for anything else and if it is not used for that purpose, it will be refunded, uh, back to the city of Moscow. It lays out the process, indicating, giving a little bit of history in the recitals and then it lays out the process on, on the, uh, page second. Paragraph one talks about what the total, uh, commitment of the city of Moscow, and we say it's committed, what we're saying is that, um, it is subject to the annual appropriation of, of the council. The council's indicated that, uh, they're verbally committing, if you will, to the two point five million dollars, uh, of match as a sponsor, like the city of Pullman is, but it does have to be reauthorized by the city of Moscow in five hundred thousand dollar increments during each budget year. Then, of course, the process goes through as to where that money goes and if it is unnecessary, where it will come back to the city of Moscow. I will add one thing, uh, before I open or turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, and that is in the second recital, uh, which had previous, previously had given the wrongful impression that the FAA is requiring that this project be done. Uh, that is not true. The FAA is not requiring it be done. What they're saying is that we're operating now with commercial air service under an exemption, um, a temporary exemption because the runway is too close to the taxiway. And if any airplane larger than, um, the, uh, Havilland Q four hundred, other than that, then no other traffic may move on that taxiway until the larger plane lands. So, what they've indicated is we will allow you to, uh, continue that air service as long as you're moving forward, but if we want to continue commercial air service in the runway, has to be realigned. And as you know, just for the benefit of folks who have not kept up on this issue, the runway realignment project is necessary because the current configuration of the runway runs right into the alignment on Moscow Mountain. It's being aligned seven percent to the north?
About five degrees.
Five degrees to the north, uh, which will put it in a valley between the peaks. So, at any rate, that's what's before you today. I hope this will be the last, uh, resolution we'll have to, to, uh, bring forward to make this transaction happen.
Gary, and I will, I will add a little bit to that because, uh, what the FAA has told us and they have gave us the right to use this and it's a safety issue. And if we don't get the thing fixed, they will pull that and the commercial service will end in Moscow Pullman. And if it ever ends, we will never get it back again. And that's the thing that we need to look at, it's a safety issue from an economic and a development standpoint for both these towns and our entire region and both these universities. It's paramount that this project moves forward. As Gary did say, each year, we will be talking about resolutions because it hasn't become for this body every single time. So, it's approved and the, the discussion will march forward, but it's good for the public and those out there watching us to understand why that is and why it is the way it is. So, further discussion, John?
Actually, Bill, between yourself and Gary and, uh, the mayor of the city of Pullman, this has been explained incredibly well, uh, a number of times and, uh, I agree with exactly what we're trying to do here. So, uh, without any further ado, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'd second that. Okay, John made a, a motion to approve this resolution, uh, the Moscow, uh, Pullman Moscow Regional Airport Funding Transfer Resolution with Jim Bowden second. I will take the role with Art.
Hi.
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 Okay, and that resolution passes five-two-zero. Thank you very much, Gary. Jeez, that comes to the end of our meeting, so now we're going to reports. Dan, we will start with you.
I really have none. Uh, the only other thing we had that everybody here was at was the, uh, meeting with the city of Pullman leadership, um, on the twenty-second, was it?
Yes.
And that was a, you know, well-attended by all of us, obviously, and also, it's, it was, this was the big topic of discussion, the, the airport, of course, and, um, how, I guess marijuana back and forth between, across the state line, that, that was a big issue to them, but it sounds like, uh, according to... sounds like, according to Chief Duke, there's not a lot of, we're not seeing a lot of it come back over here. Every, everything that's, that they've caught over here has been underage anyway, so there's, it's kind of, you know, neither here nor there, so.
Well put.
Go ahead.
And the chief of police of Pullman says they got less arrests because it's legal now, so they don't-
And fewer DWI's, which was interesting.
Yeah, there were lots of interesting stuff going on there, so, but other than that, that's, that's all I got, because Wayne took care of all the committee stuff last week, so.
Okay, Art?
I had a meeting of the Sustainable Environment Commission last week. Not a whole lot going on because it's summertime. They are looking for some citizens to come and participate and join up on the commission. They have three openings, so anybody out there who wants to be on the Sustainable Environment Commission, jump on in. Fair and Affordable Housing meets this Thursday, and the URA meets next Wednesday, so I don't have anything to report on any of those.
Okay, Wayne?
As Dan indicated, Public Works and Finance took care of all of the agenda for it to admin, because we didn't have a lot of business to do. Everything that was on the Public Works and Finance agenda was covered tonight, on either the consent agenda or on the regular agenda, and we had no reports at that particular meeting, Mr. Mayor. Other meetings that I attended, Smart Transit Board of Directors met on the 21st, and of course, as is always the discussion, is, is what the funding is, it's going to be coming from the state, and that'll be going to a final resolution, and it'll be a two-year budget. We have every hopes of being well-funded for the next two years. And then the other thing that I did on the 26th was the Sunday, was I was invited to serve ice cream at the Ice Cream Social.
Nice.
And of course, you were out of town, and the Moscow Historical Preservation Commission gave out their Orchid Awards, and so I was able to be there and represent the city in giving those awards out, which of course, you give it out to folks that have remodeled homes and businesses that have a historical value, and they've maintained some of that historical significance, and so that was kind of fun. And other than that, I haven't had any other meetings.
Thank you for doing that, Wayne. Thank you for doing that.
You bet.
The Clearwater Resource Conservation and Development Council met last Thursday, and we were happy to approve Renee Hill's 90-day probationary period in her raise. She's doing a great job, has done a lot to help with the insurance situation there, and, and the Youth Conservation Corps, the Clearwater Youth Conservation Corps completed another great summer. All the kids that worked on that did well. I think we only had one that didn't complete the whole season, and they're talking about starting another Conservation Corps group, Youth Conservation Corps, to be up on the Palouse next summer, as well as what goes on down in the Clearwater Basin, so that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you. Johnny?
I missed the last planning and zoning meeting, because I was at the meeting over in Pullman with our city and the City of Pullman, so I missed that. And I also missed the Human Rights Committee meeting, because I just wasn't feeling very well. I'm doing a lot of that, not feeling very well, so it won't be the only meetings that I miss, I hope people-
I just made it here tonight. That's good.
Johnny, you've been doing a good job hanging in there.
Yep. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay.
One other thing that I think is well worth mentioning is, on Saturday, the 25th, I was at Friendship Square where we dedicated a new park bench to memory of Dave Trail. Of course, we remember what happened to Dave and a couple of other citizens in Moscow, so anyway, I was happy to be able to represent the city at that, too, and thank you, Bill, for allowing me to do that, because, by being out of town again, so.
Yep, I guess I did go to one thing, and that was the Otteness Park dedication that happened on Friday, and it was very well-attended. The city staff did a great job on assembling it, making sure there was enough people, having some nice hors d'oeuvres, or punch and cookies, I guess, was what we had going on there, and we did have a guest in that, Lillian Otteness's son, Robert, who I graduated from high school with, came up for our 50th high school reunion, and he was there. And he was really, couldn't stop grinning during the entire presentation, he really enjoyed it, and the rest of us enjoyed being there. It's a fine little park, very good little park.
And we might add that one of the founders and pushers behind the park is sitting right there. Thank you, Victoria.
Well, I'll move on with that, and I'll, I just add to that Otteness Park, that previous Friday, the 25th or 24th, 25th I guess it was?
24th.
24th, and it was a really nice dedication, and Victoria Severs took, not only gets a lot of credit recognition, as long as a couple of other ladies, but she has taken a bunch of terrific photos, and it's very nice having those pocket parks in neighborhoods like that, so the multi-housing, so those folks that live there can have a place to go, and it's very neat, because it's a, it's a unique thing, and I talked to many, many people there that were very excited about that happening, and our parks and department did a wonderful job, as you did say, John. Last week, I want to thank Wayne for covering for me for a couple of days, and Dan here for covering while I was gone, because I was out of town for six days. Les McDonald and I went to Portland, Oregon to the Initiative for Bicycling, Pedestrian, Innovation, Comprehensive Bike Design. Now, that's a mouthful, but basically what that is, folks, is-
Tell us what you learned.
Well, the fun thing about it, Portland, Oregon is the mega on the west for biking, and we, there was folks from Philadelphia, Columbus, Ohio, San Diego, Seattle, a number of us surrounded, and it was kind of fun getting a chance to be there, because it was classroom work that we did at Portland State University. Les McDonald, as I said, was with me as well, and we would be in class for several hours, seeing all kinds of different things, different designs, different structures, and then we actually went out in the field and rode bicycles to it, so we could actually see what it was like, and so we rode 12 to 18 miles a day for four days, and it was just a hoot, and I had a blast keeping up, and most of the people there were younger than I, and so I, and I think they were a little concerned, and one guy asked me how long I'd been since I'd been on the bicycle, I said, I don't know, 25 years, and he said, well, the old saying goes, that once you learn something like that, you don't ever forget it, so we had a little bit of fun with it, but I kept right up with those kids. In fact, I pushed them a little bit, because that's my nature. But anyway, that was a wonderful, a wonderful conference that we went to, and some of the things, of course, you've got to keep in mind, Portland, Oregon, 600,000 people, and they have, you know, and then you take Philadelphia, it's got 1.5 million people, and that's, but the kind, the thing that everybody runs into, it doesn't matter your size, if you go from 25,000 to a million and a half, everybody still has budget issues. We all face that. It doesn't matter what size you are, because there's always something, and that's a uniqueness that everybody has, doesn't matter what your size is, but some of those things they've implemented there, there's a few things that we can do here in Moscow, and I'm excited about being a part of that, and being able to not only walk the walk, but talk the talk, and see exactly what it was, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to go there, and I did learn a lot, so it was, it was a good time. And in our transportation, who is the liaison for transportation, Jim, is that you? The September, when I told Les I wanted to be able to, for him and me to do a presentation at the Transportation Committee in September about what we learned and talk about bikes, that'd be a good thing for us to do. And then one other thing, and this is a announcement for all you folks out there, about the mayor's golf tournament that is going to come up on Friday, August the 14th, and so we're looking for more teams. Eric Newell is in, Parks and Rec is running this for us, and the whole thing about the mayor's golf tournament, folks, is the proceeds for that tournament will go to all terms of islands in our area. Very needed thing, and so I'm looking forward to, and it's a fun event, we're looking for folks to have a good time there, so. With that, anybody who wants to have a team, get ahold of Eric. With that, I'll pass it on you, I know you've got some information about some other things. Gary?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to announce is we have our monthly meeting with the university, school district, Leito County, City of Moscow. That will occur at 11:30 at the University of Idaho Commons, Einstein's Patio.
Okay, so it's a different time than usual? It's a luncheon rather than the morning thing.
Where's that room at? You go in and then upstairs?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
You gotta be smart enough.
If it's Einstein's Patio, it's going to be outside on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Oh, and one other thing, did you have anything else, Gary? One other thing I wanted to mention, too, I wanted to thank Lori Lewis, she has done a wonderful job the last two council sessions, and she wants to go unscathed but not be noticed, but she does a wonderful job in doing, wearing extra hats in Stephanie, Lewis, Stephanie's absence, and so thank you, Lori, very much. With that, I would ask for adjournment.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn, folks, at 8:20.